regular meeting of April 23rd, 2018. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Any changes to the order of the agenda?
No changes from staff this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Nadeus, anyone else? All right, first on number four, foray administration, excuse me, presentation, administration of the oath of office to public director, public works director, Stephen Machida. Is it Machida, Steve?
Machida, yes.
Machida, okay, sorry.
As they get ready to do this, I'd just like a minute just to talk a little bit. You guys can come up to the podium and get set up. But Stephen's our new public works director and he's coming to us with more than 32 years of experience working in the field of public works. He's coming to us directly from the city of San Mateo where he's been serving as the deputy public works director, but he also has experience in his career with Malpitas, Lathrop, Morgan Hill, and in the private sector. Stephen's a Bay Area native. He attended UC Berkeley and San Jose State where he got his degree in civil engineering. He's married to his wife. You're gonna have to help Mesley?
Masai.
Masai, okay. That's a capital I, not a capital L. They've got two sons, one's working in Toronto in the area of architecture and the other son is going to college. Steve's hobbies include, and he's a pretty active guy, bicycling, so for our last conversation, that's good, golfing, which that should perk up a couple of you up there, cooking, which we can all use around here, and travel. And in fact, he and his wife just got back from a trip to Washington DC where they saw the cherry blossoms in the Capitol. So, welcome. We're glad to have you and you're bringing a lot of experience and we've got a lot of work to do.
Thank you.
You can raise your right hand, please. Balmi swear to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the United States.
Stephen, would you like to say a few words or?
I would, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Mayor and City Council members, I just feel very, very fortunate and certainly it's a privilege to work in this great community. This certainly is my dream job. You know, I really enjoy working or living and working along in the peninsula. I enjoy coming here. Actually, my wife and I actually frequently visit San Carlos even before I became an employee here. Certainly, I know I have a lot of work to do and my predecessor, Jay Walter, actually had set up an excellent program and certainly I have some really big shoes to fill, but I believe I'm really up to the challenge and I'm ready to get my, roll up my sleeves and get to work. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Stephen, very much. Appreciate you being here. Not probably as much as Tara does, but, and by the way, just for the record, I'm sure I speak for everyone on the council and they may say something too, but want to thank Tara Peterson for stepping into the role of public works director while we were looking for the permanent one. So, thank you Tara very much. Appreciate that. Thank you for doing that. All right, the next item on our agenda is public comment. Persons wishing to address the City Council for any items not on the posted agenda. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak about an item not on the agenda? Okay, well then we'll move on to item number six, consent calendar. Consent calendar items are usually done by one motion unless someone would like to remove them. So, I'm open to removal or a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask that we remove item 6D.
D, all right. Is there any other item that needs to be removed? If not, entertain a motion for the rest of the items.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve consent counters A through G with the exception of item 6D.
A second. All right, moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Crystal, would you please record me as voting yes on all the items except F and G on which I wish to vote no?
Okay.
Thank you.
And Mayor Griselli?
Yes. By the way, I'd like to mention that the councilmember Grocott had a personal situation. He was here earlier for our closed session but was not able to attend the meeting tonight. 6D, why don't we take that right now? Do we have a report or?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we'll give you a brief report on our contract negotiations, which were for the city, were led by our administrative services director Rebecca Mendenhall and our city attorney Greg Rubens. Of course, our chiefs were there to help both sides get through the process. It did take some months, but I think that probably had more to do with the fact that there were a lot of other things that everybody was working on. So, I thought we'd begin by just giving you a little bit of background on the contract since it went into effect in 2013 and you could see what the costs have done. On average, they've gone up 7.7%. That's a little bit misleading because of that first year increase of 14.8%, which had a lot to do with where folks went over within the pay scale, the salary range or steps as we call them, and getting those folks, this was really more of a budget issue as opposed to an actual cost issue. So, some of the main issues that we were dealing with at the table with Redwood City had to do with truck company service. This goes all the way back to the beginning as well as the number of FTEs. The prior fire chief had a slightly different philosophy, I think, than our current chief does in terms of the overhiring that was happening within the department. So, they've restructured the contract to take out a few of those FTEs, that relief staff that we were paying for. When we had put that in place, the agreement was that we were funding that, but we weren't then gonna fund truck service, so we're just kind of flipping those numbers in the contract. It's really not an actual increase in terms of those things. It's really more a matter of just moving money around within the contract. Most of the increases really are related to personnel costs. The issue of unfunded liabilities is a complex one. As the council knows, you've talked about that fairly recently. This is a slightly different issue and it has to do with the fact that our unfunded liability is broken up within several different agencies when it comes to fire. We have the original San Carlos Fire Department that was replaced with a joint powers authority in the late 70s, I believe. That partnership with Belmont ended about eight years ago. We have that unfunded liability. For a brief time, we started our own fire department and then merged it in with Redwood City, so then we had some more unfunded liability. And then, of course, over the last seven years, we've accumulated unfunded liability as the city of Redwood City has sort of on their ledger. And so, we're working with an actuary right now to try to pull that, all those different pieces together so that we can sit down in a contract reopen or likely will be sitting down later this year, early part of next year at the latest, to trade numbers with Redwood City about what it is they're paying per and what it is we're paying per through them and directly through these other agencies and the city itself. So, you could see that in the first year of the contract, we would be establishing a rate of paying 45% of those unfunded liability costs that Redwood City's paying 100% of and bringing that up to 60% in year two. But again, these numbers are really, you know, more art than science at this point. We'll be waiting for the data from the actuary and to be able to sit down with the management in Redwood City and their finance folks and work out what hopefully will be a more permanent solution to this particular issue since it's likely to be with us for the next several decades. The overall tone and tenor of the negotiations with the city of Redwood City was very positive. They're still very excited about the partnership and working with the city, very committed to this shared service arrangement, you know, very open to discussing any issues that we've had or continue to have in terms of our fire and they're definitely, you know, looking ahead, monitoring some of the consolidations that are being discussed and looked at to the north of us as an eye towards future possibilities and then working with us on our San Carlos specific issues, which have had to do with inspections. We hired a new inspector this year and also planning for a future replacement of fire station 16 up on Alameda. So, of course, Stan's here, Rebecca's here, Greg's here, I'm here, and I think together we should be able to tackle any additional questions you might have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Malp. Mr. Obert?
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Jeff. Jeff, the question I have is if you flip back to the, I think it was the second slide, the historical contract costs. So, what we're voting on tonight is to extend the contract essentially for five years through 2023. Is that correct?
That's correct, but the costs come back to you every year. It's, you know, it's a five-year contract in that we're not gonna open it up except for costs, which you know what next year's costs will be now specifically, but we don't know specifically what the costs will be after that, which is one of the reasons why in the contract and you could see in the staff report, it's reflected that we do a true-up, an actual true-up process every year with Redwood City. Some years, that's money coming back to us and in some years, it's been a little bit of more money going to Redwood City.
Thank you for that explanation. The, I guess what, maybe I'll cast my comment as a going-forward remark for the next time that this comes in. I would prefer to be able to see at least in some context, I'll get back to that in a second, staff sense at any given time when we're approving this of what the cost increases are expected to be under the contract, understanding that they would be estimates for anything other than the very next year, okay? But I'm very committed to the partnership we have with Redwood City. I think you guys are great. You've bent over backwards to be accommodating for us and I really appreciate that and I know everybody in San Carlos does it well, does as well. But I'm just used to, in private, from my private sector experience, when I get into multi-year contracts, I like to at least have some sense of what the cost profile looks like. I understand that theoretically it could create some interesting negotiating issues since there are reopeners, so maybe that needs to be done in closed session instead of open session, who knows? But just in general, I'd like to see a little bit more visibility going forward.
Okay. Any other comments? Anyone from the public or anyone else wishing to speak on this item? All right, call the question. So, Crystal? All right, pardon me, I gotta have a motion, don't I?
I'll move approval.
Okay. Is there a second?
I second.
All right, thank you. Crystal?
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Obert?
Yes.
And Mayor Griselli?
Yes. Okay. Gentlemen, thank you very much for coming. Thank you very much for being here tonight. All right, moving on, item seven, reports to council, 7A. But reports to council are just updates on city projects by department heads and staff and city council subcommittees. They're informational in nature. No action will be taken on these items at this meeting. First one is 7A, report to council on wildfire threat in San Carlos and statewide mutual aid and provide drought update. Oh, I'm sorry, Dave, I guess you're gonna be here for this.
I'm gonna be here for this.
Thank you.
So, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm here to report on wildfire threats specific to San Carlos and talk about, talk about some of the specifics with San Carlos and fire history and then what was going on in the state specifically last summer and what we can expect going forward. So, statewide activity, you've probably heard on the news quite a bit recently about the increased level of fires that we've seen throughout the state and it's really been due to the drought and in a lot of areas of the state, there's been extensive tree kill. That's because of the drought, weakened trees, and that has contributed to massive fuel loads that have carried fire in times of the year that we haven't seen before. One thing that we definitely benefit from here in San Mateo County is we have that coastal influence. So, when that fog rolls over the hills, as it often does throughout the year, it brings moisture into our fuels, but that doesn't mean that we're free and clear of the threat. What we've seen and experts are still arguing on what the cause of this actually is, but when you start talking about climate change and droughts in California, what we've seen over time and what this chart shows is that we've had an increase in what we call the fire season. So, we've gone from in the 70s through the 80s, it has increased significantly from approximately 150 days of the year where we would have a really active fire season to probably about 240 or so now we call fire season. So, you're seeing it much longer. Just last year, I was sent down to Los Angeles in December for fires down there. So, it was pretty unprecedented. That is the latest in the year that I've ever been deployed on anything. Specific to San Carlos, we're fortunate that we don't have a lot of fire history and fire history gets very difficult to start digging out when you have a fire that's less than a thousand acres, but I was able to find some history in Devonshire Canyon in 1970. This fire was less than 1,000 acres. It went from King's Court and it burned up the hill towards Normandy and Coventry in that area. I'm not sure on the exact acreage, but this is the data that we were able to find from CAL FIRE to help us with that. What has changed is in this area is there's more houses in that area. The fuel load is essentially the same and we were actually able to find some aerial photos from the 1970s. And just for history, we were able to find a picture of the type of aircraft that was used at the time that I just thought was interesting. So, specific to San Mateo County, what CAL FIRE does is they look at the entire county, they look at the fuel load and they determine what the high fire hazards are. So, you can see the different colors. Obviously, pink is a fire hazard, the red is the highest fire hazard, and then it turns gray when you get into the urbanized areas where you don't have a wildfire threat at all. Specific to the city of San Carlos, it's essentially Alameda to the west is considered a high fire hazard area. Those are areas that have sufficient fuel and they're certainly close enough to homes and buildings that would be a threat. The fire threat in San Carlos, as with all fires, are driven by the fuel, wind, topography, and the urban interface. So, in certain areas of town, what you have is you have uphill slopes with houses built into those slopes because they have really nice views, but that also is exactly where a fire would run through too. So, what are we doing about it? So, we have ongoing education. We always have, we'll continue to do that. It starts with kids at young ages about not playing with matches. It deals with 4th of July and doing fireworks enforcement, which is something that we're working quite a bit this year. We're also gonna be putting out information and pamphlets to our residents this year to inform them of their responsibility to be able to maintain that fuel break around their house. Fuel management is really the main thing that you could do before a fire to be able to protect your home. And then, we're also pursuing grants. So, there's two different grants that we're going after and what this is, it's, as part of the grant process, we built a comprehensive fuels management program to determine every part of the city that the city has access to, where we control the land, where we can put in fuel breaks and install those and maintain them once they're in there. We've already received one grant, it was through Firesafe San Mateo, and I'm not gonna take credit for that. That was actually Amy Newby and Lou Duran really worked heavily on that. So, $200,000 is gonna get us started on that process and that'll begin shortly. The full program, if we were to implement everything that we developed on the fuels management program would cost around $600,000, so we still have a gap there. But what we're doing is we're also pursuing a grant through FEMA. One of my last reports I did here a little over a year ago is a hazard mitigation program, the plan that I presented to you. We adopted that, we've updated it, and within that plan, it opens up an opportunity to seek grant funding. When the North Bay fires hit, FEMA had a reopener saying, okay, anybody in the Bay Area that wants to apply for grants because of wildfire threat can do it under the emergency declaration of the North Bay fire. So, that's what we're doing now. I was hoping to have an answer on the grant for you tonight, but it's not up to me, it's up to FEMA, but I'm cautiously optimistic. So, statewide mutual aid, so last year was a pretty unprecedented year for us. At one point during the fire season, San Mateo County had 17 engines out to various fires plus miscellaneous overhead. So, when we send people to a fire, we do it in one of two ways. Either we're sending five engines and a supervisor out of county to go report to Los Angeles, Santa Rosa, wherever it may be, and they go out in the field and they fight fire. Then we also have several people who have different kinds of qualifications, whether it be in communications, management, whatever it may be, and they go out as a single resource and will go out there and help manage the fire. So, last year, we were one of the first counties that were tapped to respond to the North Bay fires. I heard that on the radio about 10 o'clock at night. We leaned forward, got our resources ready and we're on the road as soon as they, as soon as they requested us. The Thomas fire, we had a lot of resources for an extended period of time because of the nature of that fire. That's the one that was in Ventura County and several others. We were at the Canyon fire in Los Angeles. We were in Anaheim last year. It was, it was busy. The important thing to remember is when we send resources out, we backfill so all of our engines stay in service. There might be a brief period of time where, when they leave, we still have to hire people to come back and then we staff the reserve engines and put everything back in service. So, we haven't experienced any period of time where an engine has been out of service not protecting our community. It is also important to note that when there's an emergency declaration and when we get ordered through the OES system, we're fully reimbursed for those costs, whether it be the backfill or the overtime rates and vehicle rental from the state. They pay for everything, the fuel and plus administrative rate to make sure that we're fully reimbursed. for everything, the fuel and plus administrative rate to make sure that we're fully reimbursed. That's, before I move on, so that's the statewide mutual aid system. I'm going to switch to drought now. As of a couple weeks ago, this is what we're looking at in the state. There's only one small portion that's considered in severe drought. You can see on the very southern end of the state, and actually, so far, we're in pretty good shape in the Bay Area. I'm anticipating that, and what predictive services are telling us, is that it's going to be another busy season for Southern California when they get their sundowner winds or events like that. I'm just assuming that we're going to be responding south. To the north, it might be a little bit quieter for us this year, which is, which should be good news. And again, the predictive services, as of right now, it's still very early, is they're predicting a busy season to the south. What's waiting, what we're waiting for really is the rainfall in May has a bigger impact for the length of the season than the first couple months. So once they get that data in, they'll have a better, better idea of what's going on. And that is my report. If you have any questions.
Okay, thank you, Dave. Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Dave. Just probably about four or so questions. Can you go back to your, I think it was your second slide, the state activity projection So I found this really, really interesting. I mean, basically, the fire season's expanded by 50% in the last generation.
It has.
Rough, round numbers.
Has.
With all other things being equal, one would expect major fires to go up by 50% as well. So it, any sense of what's likely to happen going forward? Is this pattern going to continue, or is it expected to continue? I know you don't know what's going to happen, but...
You're getting into the climate change talk, and most recently, when I heard the CAL FIRE Director Ken Pimlot speaking about this, the state is anticipating that this will continue to get worse. And one of the theories is that a lot of the environment, the environment's changing to a more desert-type environment, and part of that has to do with that tree kill. So it doesn't affect our county so much, but if you look at areas like Mariposa County, they have huge areas where there's just a massive amount of dead trees, where you see huge brown areas in the middle of a forest. And that's going to be, they're working on actually removing those trees and trying to deal with that fuel load, but I don't, Mother Nature's in charge. When it ultimately comes to wildfire, Mother Nature's in charge, and if we continue to warm up and dry out, we're going to see more fires.
Okay. Moving forward to, I think it was your fourth slide, the one that fire threatens San Carlos. The question I had, almost, almost, that one. I presume it probably goes without saying, but I'm going to ask anyway, the two yellow carve-out areas that are sort of within the city but are part of county, they're county property basically, unincorporated county. I presume the activities that we do in terms of raising awareness and whatnot, we coordinate with the county, so they're doing corresponding things with those areas as well?
Correct. We coordinate, and this really, through Firesafe San Mateo County, it is a very coordinated effort throughout the county.
Good, because last time I checked, fires don't obey boundaries.
No, and we don't, and we don't pay attention to borders either. We get the resources there that need to be there.
That's true. When you were talking about the statewide mutual aid process, I don't know why that triggered this, this next question for me, but kind of related to the issue of fire threat in San Carlos. In your, in your perspective, are we being sufficiently aggressive in the areas particularly that are higher fire risk of managing brush cutback and whatnot? You know, with private property owners kind of getting after people, saying you have to, you have to trim that back. There is an increased risk here. It's going to get worse over the next, you know, foreseeable future.
We do see code compliance, so if someone calls up and complains about a particular property having overgrown brush, we'll respond to those. We also will do drive-by inspections during the lead-up towards the summertime wild season where an engine company captain can identify an area that needs to be addressed. I think we can always do better. I think we definitely need to update our community, update information on our website, and make sure that we really, we're going to make a pretty hard push this year for people to understand. It's on the forefront, especially with Santa Rosa. What you saw there this year was a wildfire that had so much steam behind it that it carried into a residential neighborhood. And that's not common, but it definitely highlights the threat in everybody's minds. We're going to try to get ahead of it this year.
Yeah, I mean, because those kind of fires, I mean, they're, they're classic example of a shared public risk. I mean, it's, it's not enough if I do a good job keeping my property clear. If my neighbors don't, then I'm at risk as well as them being at risk.
Absolutely.
Well, I, and not at all trying to suggest how you guys ought to do things, but, you know, if it's a matter of resources and whatnot, the difference between a complaint-based system as you described and the actually going around checking things, I personally wouldn't mind seeing what it would cost to be a little more aggressive on the checking things side as opposed to complaint-based. Because complaint-based depends upon everybody knowing how sensitive they ought to be, and they're not the experts you guys are. So, thank you.
Sure. Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dave. Great report. I only have a couple of questions. You said, and I didn't catch the end of it, you said rainfall in May has a bigger impact on, was it the fire season?
On the fire season. So predictive services is always looking at the fire threat throughout the state on a rotating basis. So at this time of year, they know pretty much what rainfall they've had over the course of the season. So they can say, okay, this area's in drought, this area's not in drought. But rain in May, because it's late rainfall, will actually prevent the fire season from starting earlier. So it has a pretty significant impact. So we often see revisions from the April forecast for the season to the end of May.
Okay, yeah, I was thinking that, that was my question, because I was thinking about it the other way, in that wouldn't more rain in May just make things grow more, which will create more fuel? Because we seem to have a very sudden dryout, you know, that happens sometime between April and June, and when it's dry, then there is no rain until October, November. But you clarified that. So more rain in May then actually does make things better.
Rain in May is good.
Okay, rain in May is good. The other thing, and I know this is not in the report, I know we didn't ask you to do it, but I've often heard people say that the hills above Crystal Springs, you know, what we call the coast range, hasn't burned in 100 years, and they think that there's a lot of fuel up there. What's your sense of that? Is that something that, was it the watershed or the San Francisco Water Department is concerned with, or any of the local officials?
It's always a concern. So last year, we actually did have a fire. It was actually in Woodside. It burned about 50 acres. They were able to get a hold of it early. But it is a threat, and it's a threat that we don't have a lot of control over because it's a forested area that is going to be a forested area. The downside of having that coastal influence that keeps it from burning frequently is that when it does, it's going to have the fuel ahead of it. It's going to have a lot to burn. So that is a concern. As we've learned many, many times over, 280 is not enough of a fire break in some circumstances if we really have a big wind event or something like that.
Right.
It is a threat.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dave, very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And keep up the good work, especially at Big Canyon Park where I live. Okay, the next item on our agenda is item 7B, Report to Council on Assembly Bill 1912, Public Employees Retirement, Joint Powers Agreements, Liability. Ms. Peterson?
Good evening, Council. My name is Tara Peterson, Assistant City Manager. Before you this evening, I have some information on an assembly bill which is making its way through Sacramento currently. It's known as Assembly Bill 1912, Public Employees Retirement Joint Powers Agreement Liability. This bill was introduced by Assemblyman Freddie Rodriguez in response to a situation with a joint powers agreement authority, which is known as a JPA, down in Southern California. When a terminated JPA, its former members started, refused to pay for the retirement benefits and obligations of that former JPA. However, this response, this bill, we feel is too broad in that it threatens the future of all JPAs. Local governments like the city of San Carlos historically address service delivery challenges through creative means such as joint powers authorities. JPAs allow us to obtain expertise and provide high-quality services that we couldn't do on our own. JPAs allow us to provide emergency services, library services, public safety services, insurance services, energy services, sewage and wastewater treatment services, and garbage services, just to name a few. The city currently belongs to 14 JPAs, and I have a list of those if you'd be interested in knowing what they are, but about six of them would be directly impacted by this legislation because they have employees that directly work and have retirement benefits. We're deeply concerned that AB 1912 will make JPAs no longer viable tool for agencies such as ourselves. What exactly does this bill do? It places substantial burdens and unworkable requirements on local agencies. It applies retroactive as well as prospective joint and several liability for all retirement-related obligations to any current or former member of a JPA since the JPA's inception. This means that if a JPA member doesn't pay its share of the retirement obligations, the other members, no matter when they joined or when they left the JPA, would be financially responsible for these unpaid obligations. These obligations include pension costs, unfunded accrued liabilities for retirees and healthcare, and other post-employment retirement benefits. It would mandate that CalPERS and other public retirement systems file suit against all agencies that have ever been a member of a terminated JPA for all retirement obligations. It would prohibit any retirement system from approving a new JPA unless the JPA has joint and several liability provisions. What is the status? The status right now is, it was, this bill was heard in the, by the Public Employees Retirement and Social Security Administra, sorry, Committee last week, and it passed out of that committee. This week, the bill is to be heard by the Judiciary Committee. The city submitted a letter of opposition and has our lobbyists working with the League of California Cities to oppose this bill. Now, I'd like to turn it over to Greg for a little bit more information on the legal consequences.
Thank you, Tara. Well, this bill, you know, with all the JPAs that you see listed here, some of them do not have employees, so it wouldn't affect those. I think Tara touched on that. But the agencies that do have them, imagine that probably one of our older JPAs is the Belmont-San Carlos Fire Department. This bill is trying to mandate what we are already doing there, because Belmont and San Carlos are agreeing to pay the long-term pension debt. So they're, so in some ways, we're already doing what they're asking us to do, but what this bill is purporting to do is mandate that all the, all the CalPERS contracts include these provisions for, for joint several liability, and they are, and the mandate, which I think is really difficult to comprehend how broad this is, but the contribution lawsuits that CalPERS would be mandated to file if, if there ever were a situation where an agency didn't pay its obligation through a JPA, so it's a remote obligation, is pretty mind-boggling how, how broad that could be. So some of these agencies have, that were members of, have, you know, 23, 50 cities. I mean, they're huge. So asking a city like San Carlos to bear the risk of all those agencies just strikes me as a bit unfair and overreaching. There's some legal arguments that the league has put out in their opposition. One is that it violates the state constitution. The, there's, every city has a debt limit, and you vote to find every year that we're in compliance with that limit. But this limit would require us to report our potential liability as a debt, because it's a potential debt. If, if we're just a member of, one small little member of a large JPA, it could be in the billions of dollars. I mean, seriously, it's a huge amount of money that could be assigned to San Carlos as a contingent debt. So that requires a 2/3 voter approval under the California Constitution to increase your debt limit. So that, that's a legal issue. The other is a gift of public funds. So if one agency doesn't pay their obligation and requiring by law the other agencies pay that obligation, that could be considered a gift of public funds because it doesn't really benefit our residents in our municipality. There's another issue that I don't see in the league's papers, but it just occurred to me, you know, in my, that there's, there might be a federal constitutional issue here because they're retroactively trying to affect all these JPAs, which are in essence contracts between cities. And, yeah, there is a longstanding constitutional provision against impairing contracts, so I don't see that in there. Maybe, maybe I'm missing something, but that could be an issue to defend this. I think this is a, I mean, this is sort of background stuff, but there were two agencies that, two JPAs, or maybe it was just one JPA in Southern California that defaulted on its CalPERS, and then the member agencies refused to pay. And so that resulted in a reduction in the, the payments to the retirees of this rather, this small agency. Now, it's important to, to those employees, but this law is like going to apply statewide for, because of one situation in Southern California. And it seems with all these legal impediments to the, to the contract and our, and our remote, we don't, and another issue, I think, and I'm, I think the, the other issue is that we don't have control as a city over what the JPAs do because we've delegated the authority. So JPAs could, they enter into their separate agreement with CalPERS, and we don't have control over that because, because we've delegated that authority through the JPA law. And that's another way this retroactivity is sort of unfair, because we have these agreements that say that we do not have to, that we're not responsible for the debts of the, of the JPA. We join it, that's one of the conditions that we joined it. And then the, the states trying to change the law, and they specifically are now exempting, are preventing us from having that type of a provision in an existing JPA or any future JPA. So a lot of, a lot of problems with this law from a legal standpoint. And, you know, my recommendation would be that we continue to oppose this.
Okay. Mr. Olbert, questions?
Actually, just more of an observation. I'd like to meet with staff offline to understand this a little bit better. Certainly have no problem with this kind of thing being brought forward. I have to say, in all honesty, that for me, something as complex as this done as a verbal report, which is presumably to spark potentially us doing some action or continuing to do something, not the right way to do things. It's just too complicated, okay? There's a, there's, as both of you were talking, I heard what you said, but one of the things I learned a long time ago in public service is that, is that there's always another side to the story. And a lot of times, that's not obvious unless you have a chance to sort of dig into it. I suspect in this case, I'm not saying I'd find anything by digging into it, I'm just saying as a, from a process point of view, I would prefer that this kind of thing be done with some kind of written material where I know ahead of time that it's going to be a complex subject, so I can ask you or Jeff or Tara questions ahead of time. Okay?
All right, Mr. Collins?
Thank you, Bob.
Could you turn on the microphone, please?
When, when did this bill come up?
Well, excuse me, the league notified us just a couple of weeks ago about its trajectory and that it actually was going to be moving forward into a committee. So we had to get a letter out right away so that it could be to the author and to all our representatives before that meeting took place last week.
So it's in committee now?
So it's working its way through committees now.
And so I guess because it, that almost negates my next question was where's the governor on this, all this, but I guess it's just way too early in the process?
Yeah, it's, it's very early in the process, but local agencies are definitely against it, and the league as well is working on our behalf to, to fight it.
Do you know who sponsored it?
It was sponsored by Assemblyman Freddie Rodriguez, and he's out of Southern California. And also the S, one of the unions down there.
Does he represent that district that had the default?
Yeah, that's a good question.
San Gabriel, and I'm not, I'm not positive.
The, just to your question, Ron, it was first introduced on January 23rd, and then it's been amended twice in the assembly on March 19th and April 19th. So it's still being marked up as it goes through the process.
Yeah, a lot of bills will start off, and we just kind of get a wind of it, they've got some traction. There's so many, so many hundreds of bills introduced every, every session, and we kind of wait and see what might bubble up into actually going to be seen at a committee.
I'm trying to figure out what, what cities and counties in California would be in favor of this. I know that's just a speculative question. I don't expect you to give me an educated answer on it, but I'm just, it's almost a rhetorical question.
The League of Cities has came out, come out strongly against this, this bill for obvious reasons. And, you know, these types of bills come around once in a while, and one of the reasons we can't give a comprehensive detailed report is because the bills keep getting changed. So when we bring something up, and we're not trying to prevent you from knowing all the nuances of it, it's just that, there was just some amendments just last week that were made on Thursday, and I printed off the bill today, and I didn't even know about those until I looked at it today, so.
May I ask a follow-on question?
Sure. Sure, in a second. Go ahead, Mr. Collins, finish, please.
Thank you. It just makes me wonder that if this wasn't one of those bills that was purposely draconian, sort of like AB 820 or SB 827, Scott Wiener's bill, which I think he knew from the outset was, you know, an incredibly aggressive bill that he knew wasn't going to be passed. And then, of course, he pulled it. And I wonder if there's a little bit of that in this bill, that he's proposing something that is so over the top that he's expecting that maybe something less dramatic will develop out of this.
Yeah, it's hard for us to know what he was thinking when he proposed this.
Okay, Mr. Olbert?
Yeah, actually, just first off, as an aside, Ron, I suspect that Wiener's bill, that was not what he was doing, but we can talk about that offline.
My impression.
But in response to your earlier question about who would benefit from this essentially, let me ask staff a follow-up question. I presume that what happens here is when that JPA, whatever it was that disappeared, and the eight, the groups that were part of it said, "Hey, we're not paying the bills." Okay? The obligation still rests with CalPERS, right? Because the employee, or CalSTRS, the employees still earn their pensions, and so they've got to put out benefits, right? It'd be as if we walked away from South County Fire and said, "We're not paying anything." That doesn't negate the payments that are going to be made to the employees. Is that correct?
No, I think actually that San Gabriel Valley Water District, I think, was the, or the, or JPA, was a JPA. What happened was the contract, because the payments didn't come, CalPERS reduced the benefits for the few, there were very few employees there, but their benefits got reduced.
I'm not talking about, fair enough, but I'm not talking about reducing, I'm talking about eliminating. What I was getting at is, from CalPERS's point of view, there's some level of obligation that still exists that they're no longer getting income deposits for, okay? That actually hurts everybody else who's part of the CalPERS system because it reduces the payout. They'd have to go to all the rest of us and say, "Hey, look, we didn't earn as much last year as we thought, you know, the balance is wrong, we need more money." That's what I suspect the motivating thing is, they're trying to prevent agencies from basically sticking this to the entire state.
That might be a good point. Jeff might have some more on that.
I think it's actually, it's along those lines, but I think it's actually intended to keep CalPERS from sticking it to the union employees.
Yes, based on what?
Because at the end of the day, there's going to be a lawsuit here, I'm not talking about the legislation, but the specific situation. When you, when two agencies come together to form a JPA, you know, they're going to be legally liable for it. They can't just pretend and have amnesia that they didn't create the JPA. It wasn't created by CalPERS or a union or anybody else. It was created by public agencies. You know, so I mean, I could see a bill saying, "Hey, you know, all the JPAs in the State of California have to have a provision in their governing documents about how member agencies will deal with unfunded liability if and when the JPA goes out of existence." But trying to create this bizarre legal framework, which really, in my opinion, has the potential to undermine your ability to enter into a JPA. What if the JPA's been around for 40 years and you're a new member? Are you signing on to 40 years of liability to join? That's a scary proposition that might, you know, lead to elected officials choosing not to take that risk and not to, because in most instances, JPAs really are shared services, right? We're coming together with our neighboring agencies to provide services to the public in a more cost-effective manner. PERS doesn't always like that because, you know, maybe that's cutting into the number of employees that are in the program statewide over the years, but the reality of the dollars that we have is that, you know, we would be providing less service to the public. So this bill seems to me like it was written by attorneys, no offense. And perhaps, and we're sharing our feedback, which is maybe to go in a different direction. If you're really just trying to solve the liability aspect, it seems like there'd be a much simpler solution.
And Mark, one other, Councilmember Olbert, one other issue that kind of scares me is, what if you enter into a JPA and for 10 years it had no employees? And then the JPA decided, "No, we have a lot more things that we're doing. We're going to start to hire employees, and then we're going to enter into a contract with CalPERS." All of a sudden, all the member agencies are responsible for that CalPERS contract years after the agencies entered into the, into the JPA, where it was never even contemplated that there would be employees. And even if, and even if you leave.
We've talked about this, I'm sure we have questions. I know I have questions, and I'll ask them offline, and we'll see, keep us informed of what's, what's going on with good old 1912. So, all right, thank you. New business, 8A, consideration of adopting resolution amending compensation provisions of the City Attorney's Personal Services Contract. And we will let Mr. Rubens leave the room. He'll have some requests to do. Promise not to talk too bad about you when you're not here. Okay, so, Mr. Malpe?
Yeah, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Jeff Malpe, City Manager. As you're all aware, our City Attorney, Greg Rubens, recently had his performance evaluation with the City Council and was given a very positive review across the board and provided some good feedback for the coming year. Greg had a few requests that he had asked the Council to consider, that the Council was amenable to during those negotiations. So we prepared a resolution that would reflect those changes for his contract. I will summarize, they're pretty brief. The contract had already had a provision for cost-of-living adjustment that would be the same as the adjustment granted to the management unit, which is 3% for this year, so that's reflected there. That comes to about $4,000, about $4,200 a year in an increase in Greg's retainer, as he's a contract and hourly City Attorney. His special projects litigation fee of $278 is not proposed to be increased through July 1st, 2019. What is being proposed to increase to $400 an hour is his rate that he would be charging specific to development projects. And really, the thought that Greg had there was, he feels that because his rate is so favorable in the contract, that a number of private developers who have applications in front of the city are starting to dump more and more of really what should be their work onto the city so that he can do it at this lower rate for them, because it's all reimbursable, whether it's 278 or 400, that's all covered by those developers and private third parties. Couple other minor changes to the contract. The contract has language that had specified that the City Attorney would receive the same type of management benefits that are called out in the contract. Greg had just asked that the longevity benefit and the CalPERS minimum health benefit be called out specifically so that they understood, because there's been changes around those benefits in the years that he's been the City Attorney. But it's staff's opinion that those two benefits have already been granted to him, and so we're just highlighting those in the contract. And then the last benefit, which would be, we think new, would be adding him to the life insurance policy, which is commensurate with the rest of the management group as well. He's not received that. The annual cost is negligible. It's like less than $100 a year, so it's very minor cost to the city to add him to that, that particular policy. I think that highlights all the major changes to the contract. It's, it really is just a continuation of the existing contract with a few minor tweaks.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Malpe. Questions? Seeing none, if...
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Resolution 2018 dash...
Forty-five.
Forty-five. A resolution of the City Council of the City of San Carlos amending compensation provisions of the City Attorney's Personal Services Contract.
A second. All right, moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
And Mayor Griselli?
Yes.
All right, thank you. The next item is 9A, Councilmembers' Reports on Subcommittee, Regional Boards, Commissions, and...
Mr. Mayor? We got, what? May I just briefly say publicly that I really appreciate all the work Greg's done? He just walked back in the room.
Sure.
And thank you very much, in particular Greg, for this year operating at profit.
Mr. Collins, did you have a point?
No, other than just several of Mark's comments, I think we're really lucky to have a great City Attorney.
Okay. I think, needless to say, I think all the Councilmembers would agree to that. Thank you for your service. Anyway, 9A, anyone have any comments? I do. I was fortunate enough to be selected to be a judge at Chicken's Ball this last Saturday, and I would encourage the community to go out. It's coming this weekend also, and I think it's a wonderful thing. It started in 1940, and I think it's the longest in the nation, the longest-running show that helps local schools. It's what, 78 years old now? And even though some of the participants may be close to that age, a lot of them are younger, too, and it's really cute performance, and I think everyone would enjoy it. Other comments? Okay, Mr. Malpe?
I'll just second that. I'll just second your comments, since I was there on Friday evening, but I managed to dodge being a judge.
Mr. Malpe?
Yeah, just a couple of comments, Mr. Mayor. Should be able to get you out of here by 10:00 tonight. Well, I was also at the Chicken's Ball. I was a judge on Sunday, so I can third the fact that it's a great show and everybody should go check it out this weekend. It's for a very, very worthy cause. Also, along those lines, I would like to plug our 7th Annual San Carlos Volunteer Expo, which is going to be taking place at our San Carlos Adult Community Center on Chestnut Street and San Carlos Avenue. It'll be Saturday, May 12th, from 9:30 a.m. to 12:30 a.m. So if you're interested in looking for volunteer opportunities, and this community never ceases to fail to impress when it comes to volunteerism and taking on worthy causes in the community. So here will be a lot of opportunities. If folks at home are thinking, "Jeez, I'd like to get involved in things going on in San Carlos and give back to my community," but they just don't know maybe how or what some of the options are available, the San Carlos Volunteer Expo would be something they might want to check out.
All right, anything else, gentlemen? Mr. Collins?
Yes, thank you. Sorry, I just, you made me think of it with the comment on the Chicken's Ball. I'd be remiss in not pointing out that my wife was also a judge, sitting next to Bob, I think helping him with, you know, his selection of the best, best gets. My wife was in, I lost count, probably 15 or 20 shows, and it was nice to see her chosen as a judge.
Okay, anything else? If not, I also wanted to make an announcement that Friday we will be having a budget session from 9:00 o'clock. Is that right, Crystal? Starting at 9:00 in the upstairs in the library?
Here.
Oh, here, I'm sorry. City Council chambers, I beg your pardon. And we're going to be talking about the two-year budget, and this will be this Friday and also next Friday. So we'll have two, two meetings. Encourage anyone who would like to be, I was almost going to say bored, but no, to find out how we spend our money to come. So, anyway, anything else? Seeing none, meeting adjourned, thank you.